All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the USD 294 Education Meeting. It is August 24th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order and start with a rule call. Please stay present and raise your hand when I call your name. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham.
Present.
Julie Dandrio.
Present.
Susan Moore.
Present.
Shanda Olmstead. She is absent. Melidia Payne.
Present.
Harold Wingert. And he is absent as well. We have five board members present. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0. The first item up is our consent agenda, which, Dr. Cobb, is there anything you want to visit with us about that?
Just to remember, the calendar is exactly the same. The reason I brought it back is that one of the Fridays didn't get filled in is green. Just want to make sure that it is appropriate to what we said it was. So it's the same calendar, just all the days are identified as early to this Friday now.
Perfect, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Susan Moore that we accept the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0. We do have one comment from the public, which I will read this evening. This was received and verified by Mr. Grell. It was submitted on August 10th, 2020 by Michelle Vink, and the comment reads, "My comment is in regards to our fall sports season. I don't know what the decision is on this, but as a parent of two OHS football players, our students need these activities to go on as planned. It has been a long five months for our students, and it has been hard on them all. Thankfully, our sons and daughter were still able to play baseball and softball all summer along with no issues and have fans in the stands. I know that social distancing will be something that will need to be done, but there's plenty of room in all football, volleyball, soccer stands, et cetera, on both sides to at least let two fans in for each player. My hope for our boys is that there is football, but as every, as a parent, my hope is also that I get to watch my boys play, even if I have to pull up a lawn chair and watch from the fence. I am not just concerned with sports, but all activities, including choir and band. Please let our kids be able to do the activities that they have worked so hard on and so desperately need. Thank you for your time." And that's the end of that comment. Okay, on to our reports and presentations. First up is Section 5.01, which is our broadband presentation. Mr. Grell, have an update for us?
Yes, this is going to be kind of all over the place, but you're used to hearing that from me because I just jump from thing to thing. We've been pursuing a grant with the Kansas Department of Commerce. It is a SURGE grant, C-E-R-G, and I don't remember what the acronym stands for. I apologize, but I'm sure it starts with coronavirus. But what they are offering us is a way to help us with this broadband initiative. And as you recall, we initially planned to use what was called education broadband services, which is for educational institutions only, but that has been auctioned off. So if we wanted to pay to play, we could get EBS licensing to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars to have a license. So we worked with a partner, and that partner informed us that we could do this on a different licensing that was a free licensing that was still licensed. We had to apply for a license, but it was a free, no cost to us license that would allow us to operate in a different frequency. And what that means to us only is that we're at a higher frequency that cannot penetrate foliage and buildings as well as the 2.5 gigahertz frequency that the other one would allow us. So that's the trade-off. The new information we have for you is that we did talk directly to the Kansas Department of Commerce, and we said, "Here is our idea for this project. This is what we want to do." After we sat through several webinars, and they responded directly and said, "This is what we want to spend this money on. This is the type of thing." They've had schools coming saying, "We want hotspots. We want to pay for hotspots," but those are moment-in-time funding. That is fleeting. It'll be gone. You spend the money and it's gone. Ours is infrastructure-based. It addresses need, and hopefully, once it gets funded, it lasts forever. So the new information we received today, I received at 4:40 PM. I'm going to show it to you. It's informational only. We're not making a decision, but we received information at 4:40 PM that kind of shows us how we're going to move along this process, and we're going to set our proposal up. Our grant window started on the 19th and ends on the 27th. That's how much time we have to apply for this, and it is not a lot of time. So we have an engineer helping us because we are not qualified to do this. We want to make sure that it is put together properly and sent out properly, and in doing so, we have to hit a few certain stipulations. So go ahead and click that first tab. The first stipulation, if you'll go to Ottawa, Kansas, the first stipulation is that we will not spend money on a non-unserved or underserved community. And they define that underserved or unserved community by FCC Form 477, which, as we all know, is not very accurate. They even went so far to say during their presentation that the Form 477 information is not that accurate. So as I show you this area, and if Dr. Cobb zooms out just a little bit on this screen right here, a little further, and get the whole city, the lighter the color, the more likely we are to get funded. That's not what this map means, but based on the number of people that are served by an internet service provider in that area, if there are six or five or four, it's a darker color than if there's zero, one, or two. So if we're at zero, one, or two, we have a better chance of getting funded. So, Dr. Cobb, if you click that cog wheel by broadband. Can you give your pointer? And I already turned it off. So you'll see that we turned off satellite internet because the FCC does not recognize satellite internet as an option. I mean, you'll get service, but if you've ever had satellite internet, and I really wish Shanda was here so she could talk about it. It is horrible. It is atrocious. It does not meet that 25.3 speed guideline. So you'll see over here on the right-hand side, 25 megabits per second down, 3 megabits per second up is classified as broadband. If they can't hit that number, the FCC says we are underserved or unserved. So let's go ahead and close this window.
So satellite, kind of like what the old dial-up was, that's slow?
Satellite would be your HughesNet. DirecTV had an option.
But what I'm saying is it's slow like that, like old?
Super slow, yep, because you are talking to space and back.
Oh, awesome.
It's not a good experience for anybody. I used to sell it through a company that I worked at. It's not a good thing. So what the FCC tells us is that this data is not accurate. We should not rely on this data. So when we apply for this grant, we have to prove that we can hit underserved or unserved areas. So as you zoom in, let's go down the street a little bit towards my house, Dr. Cobb. Keep going. Oh, zoom back out a little touch. And right down there. So to the right a little bit, right there. Go one more polygon to the right, one more to the right. There you go, that one. One of our board members lives right there, in that census tract. This says that she has two service providers that serve her area. She has none. I assure you 100%, we've had the conversation. She's had both of the internet service providers listed here at her house, and they cannot give her service. My census tract is right next door, and it says I can get Vive broadband at my house. I can't. Dr. Cobb's census tract is on here, says he can get Vive broadband at his house. He cannot. So when we asked the Kansas Department of Commerce if we could do this, because we didn't hit necessarily, based on this data, the underserved or unserved qualifications, they said, "In that case, you probably need to show in some way that at least the majority of premises where you are proposing lacks adequate connectivity." So since we are doing a wireless installation, what the SURGE grant allows us to do is we can serve our community that has adequate internet access, and then beyond that, where our reach stops, those would be our outside community members that have the lesser quality of internet. Additionally, based on the way we install this, which I'll show you a little bit, we can hit the outside first and then come in as funds allow with our own money. So if you want to go to that second presentation. Yep. And scroll, oh, right there, that's good. Sorry, right back up. So this is the information that we got today, and what our engineer has done, they have put a bunch of these cells on a map. You'll see the outlines of different colors are elementary school boundaries, and then within that reside the bulk of our student population. This is what we want to do. And I'm going to explain, if you're going to go to the very first slide of this real quick. So the first option they gave us was they wanted to do fixed wireless. And fixed wireless is we would have to install equipment on every house that points at an antenna, and it doesn't move. We don't want to do this. It's the cheapest route, but it's the cheapest route for a reason, and long-term cost would be ridiculous. We'd be supporting everything. We don't want to do that. So let's go back down to that other one, sorry. Right there. This is a little more in-depth, and what it would involve is, I believe, 13 individual sites that have been identified in our area that we would set up what's called macro mobility towers. Meaning, the student would have a device much like this that has a USB port on the end. They plug it into their laptop, their Chromebook, their home computer. They now have internet. Anywhere in there, that's not a purplish color. We get pretty far away from our territory with this macro mobility network, and anywhere inside of there, pretty much almost completely covered. We could use this for every single student, and it'd be on our network. It'd be on our internet. They're not paying a monthly fee. They pay for the cost of this, but the grant can also cover the cost of this. So this is more expensive. It's a more expensive option. As we talk about the 13 sites, I believe each site needs to have two to four base stations, and each base station costs about $8,000 to $10,000. Excuse me. So it adds up. But the SURGE grant, if we apply for it and we get it, would force us to, or would require us to pay 20% of the final cost out of our pocket. And then 50% of that 20% can be in-kind dollars from other entities. And additionally, the 20% can also be covered by coronavirus funds that we have currently received. So we can receive Spark dollars or coronavirus CARES Act dollars, spend them on this SURGE grant, right back out. May not, but it's all going to depend on the application process. Again, we are moving quickly. Our next step is to identify households. We'll probably send out a survey tomorrow and try to get some information back that can show what number of students we have in what areas that we would need this service. And it would be an incredible service to offer our students. It would be incredible. The one thing we have not done is the engineer strictly had the shapes and the boundaries of our elementary attendance areas. This doesn't have necessarily population density in a far corner, where we can see, you know, this far-right corner may not be very populated. We don't need to have a tower out there. It may be more cost-effective for us to say, "Let's give all of those students hotspots that we do pay a monthly fee for" instead of this four-base-station antenna with an extensive cost upfront.
So you need an elevated to put that?
So yes. All of these sites.
Pointing at out there, there's some farmers, I'm sure, that have some grain towers tall enough.
And because this information is so new to us, I sent a question to them saying, "Are these existing leasable towers? Are these towers we need to procure and install? Are these water towers? What are we looking at? How'd you pick these spots?" And typically, they'll pick water towers and existing high-aerial equipment that we can attach onto.
Just so you all know, this conversation is taking place, city and county as well. So they've engaged in this conversation with us. I think we're probably a little more developed in terms of the thought process. We had started this long before Corona dollars had started to come through. So I think the conversation would be real about utilizing water towers and whatnot for us to be able to do this without an additional charge. I know that KOFO has offered up their tower. So there's some things that are out there that we could utilize, hopefully, that wouldn't create a cost for us if what it means for our community is that people have access to particular things.
I do have a question, Dean.
Yes.
This is just for student learning, or if you get this, is it for, like, family fun? Netflix and all that?
That question comes from Linda Alderman. Sorry. That's all right.
I'm going to answer this into the mic, and I'm going to answer it one time, hopefully. We're not going to monitor exactly everything that happens on here. They'll still be filtered on our network. Anything a student can get to on our network, they could get on at home as well. So I believe at times, that list changes. So I don't have a good answer for you. But if they wanted to use it to search for something, and it's a family use, we know that happens right now. We have families that tell us their Chromebook is the only device in their household, and it becomes a family device. And we certainly don't have, we don't pick and choose and say, "We can't do that. That's not an option." Not at all. The one limitation this does have, I believe, I'll talk to this gentleman again tomorrow, but is this device a USB-pluggable device directly into the Chromebook, and then one person can use it, which is what I'm expecting it is, and not necessarily you plug this into a router and then everyone can use it? We have to explore those options. When we first started this with the EBS spectrum, it would have a device in the house that you sit in your window, and then it rebroadcast a signal into your house. And that made a lot more sense for us because we would have two or three students in a house. Whereas this, we'd have to have one of these for each student or share one of these for each student. So we're still exploring what this is going to look like. It's called CPE, Consumer Protected Equipment. I'm hopeful that we can still have the rebroadcastable SSI, or the wireless network inside the house because then we do one per household, the cost comes significantly down, and you can have six devices, five devices on at the same time. So we will see.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Grell?
Melidia Payne, I had a follow-up question to Linda. So could that device be plugged into another device other than the school-issued Chromebook then?
Certainly, yep. We would not limit based on what's called MAC address. So each computer has an individual MAC address, and we could say only those are allowed on here. The limitation would be this device talks to our network. So as they plug it in, it'll say, "Hey, what student are you?" They sign in with their Rocket authentication that they're all used to doing, and then we know from the filter side that this activity on this computer is Dean Grell's activity at home. So if there is something inappropriate or something we need to track down, we have that available to us. Yes, it's a great question. One final thing on this. The award date, September 15th, and the project has to be complete by December 30th. So a very, very aggressive timeline. They've told us that time and time again. We have a lot of challenges here, but we have a lot of support in it as well. We have to demonstrate community support, which we're going to do with our survey as well. We have community partnerships. We'll talk to city and county, and we already have those, that information ready for us. So our grant will go out here soon. That is all I have on this particular topic.
Dean, Chris Cunningham. So from what you were talking, equipment and price-wise, I just rounded up. So we're looking for those 13 sites, minimum about $300,000 in equipment, and then I'm sure there'll be some other things.
Yep, installation costs.
But yeah, then we can take different percentages of that cost and apply it back to Sparks or in-kind money.
Yep. 20% of that we have to pay for.
Just want to make sure I understood.
And 50 of that 20 can be in-kind dollars.
And how much upfront do we have to pay for?
That 20%.
20%.
There are some other conversations that we would probably need to have around that as we get started. The interior of our city is well, I mean, if you start talking about this piece right here, it's well-covered. So it may be worthwhile us having a conversation. We don't start with 13 towers, but we start with places that we can address the exterior pieces of our city and work ourselves inward as time and need allows.
And we still have the hotspots to fill in in the middle for any family that needs those as well.
The hotspots certainly are going to work a lot better in town than they're going to work out here. But if we could address these needs out here with our families that really struggle to find internet, that would be a huge step in the right direction for what might be a long-term project for us. Now granted, we may not have CARES Act dollars forever, but in order, this is part of the problem. So the grant became available like on August 14th or something like that, and we have to have it submitted by the 27th. You can see the amount of information that it's going to take to get this, which is why we have the conversations with them in person so that they can know who we are and what we're trying to do. It's a heck of a lot of work. A $300,000 project is a heck of a lot of work to accomplish in two weeks.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that what we do is right without putting our district at risk for any other issues and to ensure that we can utilize Spark dollars and CARES dollars through the Department of Commerce before we even begin to really start thinking about how it impacts us.
And one final thing, the Department of Commerce has told us repeatedly, they've actually emphasized two things. One, they don't want to overbuild served communities, which we get it, there's competition there. We're not trying to run anyone out of business. And then the other thing they've told us is that there are not major disqualification factors, but once you submit your application, there will be open dialogue of saying, "Hey, maybe you should try to put this in there, or maybe emphasize this need in this part of the community." They want to see the data before they make any award decisions, which I respect that.
And do you see where we might have trouble as we've talked about other electronic devices that we've ordered? You know, I heard you say December 31st?
December 30th, yep.
Yeah. I mean, I hope when they award it that they realize that we could be held up on getting the equipment and getting it installed.
Yep. But I would also expect, and this is just an assumption, that this is not a hot commodity. This is a very specialized installation. Some schools are doing this, none nearest that I know of. We do have school references from this company we're working with that we're going to check in on too and see how their real-life experience has been to their model, to see that they're hitting those spots that say, "Oh, we have great service," or "We have okay service." There are many, many, many options that we could have gone with on this, and we've talked to a lot of people about those options. And schools that have hit the news, nationwide news for a technology that they used, and then less than a year later have gone, man, that didn't work so hot. We don't want to do that. We want to have something tried and true, and the LTE network is the best way to go with this.
I think it's great. I mean, if we can pull it off, and then with the Spark money and some of the other money, to me, it sounds like we're, by the time we'd get those funds back, we're going to be pretty close to being flush of what we were, of what we had to pay out of pocket for the project.
Any other questions for Mr. Grell? Dean, thank you so much for all of your work. I can imagine the time you're putting into this project, and it's really appreciated. Adequate access to internet has been something that's been important to this district and this board for a long time before Corona came, as you know with the projects you've done before. And it's certainly a national hot topic with the homework gap and access to internet. So thank you for providing this and letting us take this even further.
I've put a lot of time into it, but this is a much bigger problem than Dean Grell, so.
Thank you. All right, up next is Section 5.02, Transportation Plan. Dr. Cobb?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you all a glimpse of what transportation looks like, and it is vastly different than what it has looked like in the past. So what you see in front of you is the bus routes for a multitude of buses. You see buses 52, 53, 54, 55, all depicted here. And these are your in-town routes and the things that are going to happen here. So I want to bring this up because of the additional stops that we have in place and how they will work to ensure the safety of our students. So we will take a look at this bus right here, which is bus number 55. So it will start in the morning at 6:50, picking students up at the Don Woodward Center. It will then head to Garfield, pick up students at Garfield, and go and drop them off at OHS at about 7:15. That bus, Dean, if you, and I'll, we'll go to the next one here in just a second. That bus will then stop and clean. So it's only going to have high school and middle school students on it at that point in time. It will then stop and clean. It will then, you can see it shifts down here. It will go back to the Don Woodward Center, pick up elementary kids, go to Eugene Field, pick up elementary kids, stop at 13th and Elm, pick up elementary kids, and then drop at Sunflower. Then that will be its final stop for the day. So you can begin to see how bus 55 works its way through the city to one, make sure that we don't have a large volume of students. Before, all students would be packed on the same bus. So trying to make sure that we don't overload our buses, trying to make sure that we can create stable environments on the buses, that we know what we have at what times, as well as being able to manipulate their pickup and drop-off to make sure that we can get them there before school starts. And then you see the transition at the end of the day and what happens there. But I wanted to show you this document and how it works. Dean, if you'd click on the next one.
I have one question, Linda Alderman. Are we going to, on some of these stops like North Cedar and Massasoit, are we going to have some kind of shelter for kids in the rain?
There is not one there, in part because there's not a great spot to put any of those things. So typically, these are gathering spots for our kids. But as far as having a place, a legitimate place for, like we do at Eugene Field and whatnot, there is not one. And there's not one at Don Woodward Center anymore either. Most of our bus stops do not have them unless we own them. So the places that we've picked up students that are no longer school-owned typically do not have them.
Okay.
Dean, if you look at the next one, you can begin to see, this is a picture of the same type of bus. We'll use bus number 52 here. But you can begin to see, it picks up at Don Woodward at 6:55, then it picks up at Garfield, drops students at OMS. Right, so this is high school, middle school students are going to drop off, and you can see here that we spray the bus at that point in time. So we go through a disinfectant process, make sure that our buses are clean before we head back to Don Woodward Center, and then 8th and Borough, 16th and Cedar, before we drop students at Garfield until we get to midday. Okay, so you can kind of see, one, the volume of pickups and the volume of in-town that we have added to try to make sure that we have everything right. And there's a lot. There's a lot. Transportation, given the AB schedule that we've created, was a huge part of trying to make sure that we could minimize an already extreme impact upon parents. Right, so I don't want to indicate that we've done something that has taken all pressure off of parents, but what we've tried to do is limit that pressure as much as we can by providing a number of extra stops and transportation at both the morning, midday, and afternoon to get kids to and from.
I had two questions, Melidia Payne. First, when will the rule writers get the information about when they will be picked up?
I don't know. I can ask, I would imagine that Frida will be sending that information out as soon as she has the routes identified.
Okay, very well, because I know there are quite a few people who may possibly be riding the bus this year that previously haven't and don't have any idea or whatever. And then my second question is, if a student, you spoke last time about the temperatures being taken before they get on the bus. So if someone would have a temperature when they're at the bus stop, then what is the procedure about leaving the child there?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things. And one is going to be a conversation from transportation and from our schools to our parents about utilizing the transportation. One, talk to your kids before they leave. Check their temperature before they leave the house. Don't let them go so that they're not sitting out there with a temperature prior to getting on the bus. I know that some parents are not there, and some kids are on their own. I recognize all of those things. But for the most part, we should be able to have conversations with the vast majority of our kids about their health before they leave the house. If we can address those things prior to, we should. For those that do not, then the process is going to be when they get there, when a bus driver recognizes that. when, when a bus driver recognizes that, that they are not where they need to be in terms of their, their personal health. We're going to identify that. We're going to have a conversation with the school. So the bus drivers have a direct link to our schools. They'll contact the school, identify the student. We'll start contacting parents. We'll make sure that that student is isolated, so to speak, at the bus stop. If parents can't get to, we will find a way to get somebody to the bus stop to address the needs of those kids and move forward. But part of that is going to be a responsibility of parents to take care of their kids in this environment. So I don't think that we can stand up here and say, well, if, if they're standing there, we'll take care of it and we'll provide a place for them to be because we can't. We don't have the ability to do that, nor do we want to put other people at risk by doing it. So we're going to ask parents that they, that they take the opportunity to address the healthcare needs of their kids before they go there. If it happens that they get there and there are no parents there, then the schools will step in and try to initiate contact with parents, and if we need to go get kids, we'll go get kids.
Thank you.
Dr. Cobb's?
Yep.
Chris Cunningham. So we, these are four buses. These four buses are just our in-town.
In-town routes.
Okay. So describe to me on, it says spray bus, so that'd be like before the next round of pickup after the first round of drop-offs.
Yep.
On some of these, until they have a little break at lunchtime, we're giving them five minutes. Are they just spraying it down with a bottle? Do they have to wipe it down?
They've got, they all have a spray bottle with a cloth to wipe down, and everybody's got an assigned seat. So we should only have to identify the seats that we, that we sprayed down, otherwise just where you would touch and walking by.
Okay.
So shouldn't have to get to every seat.
The bus drivers were, okay.
Yeah, so just like if you remember when we first opened Sunflower, the, the first week or so of pickup and drop-off at Sunflower was pretty rough. And I think this is going to be pretty rough. It's, it's pretty, pretty compressed times, and I would imagine that we'll probably have some kids getting to school a little bit late, and we'll have to address some of those things. But I know that we'll get better each and every day until we figure out what's happening and what works well and how we, how we best maneuver through this. But it's, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot to ask of our transportation department to try to do this, but I think they're going to, they're going to do a fine job, and we'll work through that as best we can.
Yeah, I, that was the only thing I saw. It was like, you know, five minutes is kind of crunch time. It's.
Not much time.
Any other questions regarding transportation? All right, are you ready to move us on to the next section here, before, during, and after-school student options?
Yeah, so the next piece on this is, we, again, the idea behind this is to minimize the impact of parents, knowing that we've impacted parents pretty substantially in an A-B model. But we've had conversations with, Dean, if you could go to the next slide for me, with three different entities, Reach for the Stars, which is our current after-school program, the United Way, and the Ottawa Recreation Commission, to provide a full-day option for students. So Reach for the Stars has an opportunity to provide for, for 20 students, split between the three elementaries, so not 60 total students, but 20 students, about seven students from each elementary, or a different number depending on who's interested in the, in the type. It might be that all 20 come from Garfield if nobody else is interested, and if that's what it is, then, then great. But they would have an opportunity to attend a full day at, at Eugene Field. So if they are an A student, they're going to school, right? They've, they find their way to school, whether it be through transportation or whatnot. The B student finds their way to Eugene Field, and we're not providing transportation to Eugene Field. You can see our transportation schedule's already a mess. We're probably not doing that. But when they get there, they have a place for breakfast. They have a place that is going to provide homework help. They'll have a place to provide some exercise and activities. They provide a lot of different things, right? So it's, it's basically a, a place for their remote learning to take place in a supervised area, right? Have adults there to help, teachers there to help, so on and so forth. When the transition comes, those students will get on a bus, go to their school of choice for their, for the B session, and the A students will come back to Eugene Field and remain for the remainder of the day. So in essence, they have a full day of supervised time, right? And then even with that transition, that transition is predominantly bus rides back and forth, right? So the, the B students would get lunch in the building, and then we, we would get them, or would get breakfast, and then lunch, and the A students would get breakfast in the building, lunch in the after, in the other school program. So this one is, is going to have some cost associated with it. They're still working out exactly what that cost is, but that's not any different than the after-school program that they provided for. There still will be an after-school program associated with Reach for the Stars, so they have 20 kids in the morning, 20 kids in the afternoon, probably an additional 60 kids after school. So if you still needed an opportunity for your kid to be someplace until 5 o'clock or so, Reach for the Star program would still be available for that. This will be Monday through Thursday, so Friday is still an open option. There, something is going to have to happen with students on Friday, but Reach for the Stars would have them Monday through Thursday. The Ottawa Recreation Commission offers a similar one. They offer for more kids, 30 to 45 kids, split 15 at each building, and split into different groups, so those kids don't intermingle. Same would be similar. We'll split them by age level at Eugene Field though, but by grade, or by building at ORC, so all the Lincoln kids are together, all the Garfield kids are together, all the Sunflower kids are together. Again, there is a cost. This one is associated with $35 a week, and there are some upfront costs associated with it so that you just don't start and never go back because it does impact who might be eligible for the, for the program. They will continue their after-school program as well. The last one is the United Way. They're using the Carnegie Center, so they are looking at anywhere from 35 to 50 spots. They have multiple rooms upstairs, ground level, and, and below to do what they need to do. Again, they'll split their groups. We'll make sure that we have safe environments. There's no cost associated with the United Way. Okay, so each one is a little bit different, but the United Way is also only Monday through Thursday, so parents would have to find a Friday option. We will provide transportation in the transition period. So not to or from, right? So you've got to get your kids to one of these options, and you've got to pick them up at the end of the day from one of these options. But the transition from ORC or Carnegie or Eugene Field to their building, we will provide. And I've got Frida working on that. I think we've, we've got a plan in place to, to make this happen. But that was the, that was the caveat that we, that we had to work with these groups with because they don't have the ability to provide the transportation. And the transportation is one of the biggest issues here. Not many parents can get away in the midday just to go pick their kids up and get them to school. So the transportation piece is real, and we'll make sure that we can find a way to make that happen. We started conversations with administrators about how we deal with this transition of kids in and out of the, of the building when this is really a time in the day in which there's not anything happening in the buildings. So we'll work through those things as well. But total, we're talking about, you know, anywhere from almost 200, 220 students that might be serviced in an all-day program, which is, which is huge. An interesting piece of this is that I've been working with social workers on trying to identify families that would be interested in this, and we're kind of struggling to find them as most families have seemed to have found a way to make this work. So that's a positive, but we still will have this option available, and we'll make sure that information gets out to families. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of what we were doing before we really put it out there. But these are, these are great options. The United Way one, and definitively the Reach for the Stars, will utilize our school kids as mentors to our little kids. So we'll find some ways to utilize those kids to interact and build relationships with, with some of those kids and try to be mentors to them. So it will be a, a great opportunity for them. We'll utilize that as a credit-earning opportunity, which would be no different than the internships that we provide through the school and other capacities. But in the, in the grand scheme of things, I very much appreciate the United Way and Lee Hansen, ORC and Chad Brunner and the others that are involved in developing this plan, and certainly Jamie Kider and Reach for the Stars. None of them have to do this, but certainly even those that, that have costs associated with them. The benefit to our families is, is extensive, and we appreciate their help a great deal.
Any questions for Dr. Cobb's about these options? Dr. Cobb's, this is Julie Dandrio. For any parents that are watching tonight that say, oh, I, I need to sign up for one of these, should they wait till information comes out, or should they call the district office, or what, what do you want them to do?
They can, they can do a couple of things. At this point, the information is there. We will send information out. I'll, I'll get a parent letter out there, but if they wanted to reach out and get on the list, I think the, the ORC is probably ready to go. I'll make sure that they're aware that we can provide transportation tomorrow, and they'll start working through that. If they wanted to contact Chad Brunner at the, at the Gopert Center, I think he would be open to, to beginning to, to take those, to take those calls. Jamie Kider is ready to go at Reach for the Star, so again, I think Jamie's email is a USD 290 email, and people can find that, and then certainly Lee Hansen at United Way. So any of those websites will direct them to the coordinators to be able to, to get information there. But if not, they can certainly email me, and I will pass their information along, make sure it gets to the right people.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. All right, we are moving on to our business portion of the meeting. Our first item is policy updates, and this is just the first read, so we are not taking any action on this tonight.
Yeah, I don't know how in-depth anybody wants me to, to go on this. We could certainly go through it. You've had it, and I think in the update, I provided an overview of it, of what each one of these things are. I think the vast majority of them are, are issues with language or punctuation and types of things, pretty minimal changes to the overall policy. The biggest ones are, again, were the Title IX, which we've already addressed, but there's another one that is on training for child abuse. So this is a big one, and again, it's not tied to Channel IX or Title IX, but it, it does go along with this notion that we need to be more cognizant of what's going on. So there will, there will be training, mandatory training that has to happen to prepare our staff to identify what's going on with situations of child abuse. The tobacco ones are extensive, and you see so many of them because there are policies on staff, and then there are policies on students. So the vast majority of them have definition changes due to the vaping group that, that started to identify different expectations with tobacco and tobacco products on school grounds. But the other one that's, that is interesting to us is foreign exchange students. So many of you may know that we have not had a policy on foreign exchange students because typically the policies would indicate that we would have to accept foreign exchange students. So if you had a policy, it's, it would indicate that you shall accept foreign exchange students, and there are lots of companies out there that don't provide great exchange opportunities. So we've not had one, and it's always been in the hands of the principals to determine whether or not the exchange company is a reputable one, and they're going to do right by the kids, and that their kids are actually prepared to, to come to us, that there are not major language barriers, that, that we don't have crazy age barriers. There are a lot of things. So this is the first one that they've identified, and you can see that it replaced the word "shall" with "may." It gives us some latitude to, to have an exchange policy without being forced to accept any foreign exchange student that comes into our district or requests to come into our district. So those are the policies. If anybody has any specific questions.
Anyone? All right, I think we are ready to move on to 6.02, which is school times, and we are needing to take action on this this evening.
Okay, so I just wanted to put this out there for start and stop times of schools and when kids will be there. So you see at OHS, OMS, 7:45 to 10:45, and then your Friday time. This is typically something that's approved by the board, so I wanted to make sure that we get it out there and approved by the board. This is not about teacher contract time, so negotiations, still have some conversations that we need to address about teacher contact time or contract time. But in this particular group, there are three-hour sessions for each A session and B session, with the exception of Friday, which is a little bit less. Make sure that we have some consistency amongst all of our buildings and the expectations for students that are there.
Any questions regarding these times? Would someone like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the school times as read.
Second?
It was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Susan Moore that we approve the instructional times as presented. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0.
Would indicate that the expectation there is still that the reported school times remain the same, that COVID-19 schedule doesn't impact what the actual school function time is, and hopefully we can get back to that full-day schedule sooner rather than later and address those issues. So we'll work through that with KSDE, but there are the actual school times which were addressed earlier.
All right, let's move on to 6.03, Spectator Plans. Dr. Cobb's, share with us what you've come up with.
All right, so there are lots of things here, and, and I'm sure that you've heard lots about county participations and guidelines in terms of, of what's going on with spectatorship. So I met with Dr. Ransom and Nick Robbins, as well as Casey Brady and Derek Brown last week, as well as the other three county superintendents to discuss what the specta, what the spectator plan would be. And so in essence, what we get here is a plan for venues that are ticket-taking venues and ones that have definitive areas for spectators to gather. So you don't see tennis on here. You don't see cross-country on here. Some of those will be identified through the Frontier League events because, one, there's not ticket-taking, and, two, there's not a specific place for spectators to gather there. But in terms of football, what we presented to the county and what we were approved with was that each of the three distinct sections in the stadium would have the ability to host 45 spectators. The initial row would be, would be blocked off so that there would be easy travel going through the stadium, and then every other row would be blocked off as well, totaling 135 fans allowed in the venue. This does not account for a student section. There's, there's not a student section that's available in this plan. The visiting side has two different bleacher sections. Each one of those would get 45 spectators per, so a total of 90 fans on the spectator side. And again, we have to remember that the home side of the stadium is different than the, than the visiting side of the stadium. If the band were to perform, and currently we're talking about them doing the National Anthem, but not necessarily a halftime show, although that, that may change as we continue to have the conversation. But if we, if we have the band perform in this environment and parents want to come watch band kids participate, then they would come down onto the field with the band kids and the teacher coming from the classroom down onto the track. Parents would remain on the track. They would not go into the, into the stands. When the band was done performing, they would leave with their, with their kids, not stay for the remainder of the event. If the dance team is performing solely at halftime, we would have something similar to that taking place in which parents would come down with dance team members, remain on the track during their performance. When their performance was over, they would leave. So again, trying to create a situation in which parents can watch their kids perform and, and do the things they do. The other pieces of this are cheer and, and football. So you have 135 total tickets that would be available, depending on how the teams are restricted, and they will be restricted in a number of different ways. But you're not going to see 70 kids on the sideline for a football game. You're going to see the kids who are going to have an opportunity to play in that game be on the sidelines, and you're not going to have just extras standing around. Those, those persons and whoever might be on the cheer team at that point in time will take those 135 tickets and split them amongst themselves. We'll have a conversation with them about who they want to put on the pass list, and we'll, we'll have a, some sort of pass list available. we'll have some sort of pass list available, whether it's a ticket system or a pass list system. But ultimately, they will determine who they want to come watch them that night. And so, one, it'll be a logistic nightmare, but this is going to be what it is as we continue to move forward. Everything's going to be a logistical nightmare. So they will identify who they want to come watch them on that night. They'll have a name on a pass list. We'll either provide them with a specific ticket that is special for that night, so it can't be counterfeited or whatever it happens to be. You either have to have that ticket to get in or you have to show identification of you're on this pass gate. Same with the visitor's section, so they'll have to take care of that as well. If you're not on the pass gate, then you're not getting into the stadium. It's pretty simple. Anybody that comes into the stadium has to have a mask to get into the stadium. We're going to ask that they continue to wear their mask in the stadium. Those were all expectations of the county health department as we worked through this, and I think something that you're going to see from every Frontier League event as well as the other county events that are hosting them. Soccer is similar, the different numbers based upon their bleachers, but the process is the same, same for volleyball. So as we go through each one of these, the expectation is that we have a specific area in the stands for home crowds, a specific area for away crowds, a pass list to get them into the event, expectations to wear masks and be distant during those environments. If there is an ancillary event, parents can come in, watch the ancillary event, leave with those kids. That is the spectator plan. Dean, if you look at the Frontier League plan, you can see it's very similar to what was created. So the league was limiting tickets to four persons as a whole anyways, regardless of what your venue looked like. So if you had a huge venue, you still only got four tickets. It's pretty similar to what we have here. They did indicate that depending on which county you were in, those things might be different in how the health departments and the specific schools chose to work through it, but as a whole, they were indicating that nobody had more than four tickets to limit crowd sizes. You will get passes, you all will get passes. I think that they want to continue to have boards support what's going on with their kids and be able to get in, but those things I think are limited as well. And then they talk about gates and so on and so forth. So they had indicated that we may subject persons to temperature screenings coming in. That's not something that our county indicated was important, so at this point, it's not necessarily what we would do, but certainly we want to make sure that even though we have always taught our kids, you know, the after-game handshake and all of those things, we're probably not doing those things, which does seem a little bit odd, especially if you're playing football, you're going to go out there, you're going to throw one another around, but you can't give high fives at the end. But that's the way that it goes. We'll give fake high fives on the way out.
I have a question. Linda Alderman here. I know the view wouldn't be great, but people would not be prohibited from setting up lawn chairs on the periphery of the fence?
I will tell you, and this is a conversation that we've had with lots of different entities, there are certain things that we're going to have to police and other things that we cannot police. We've always had people line up on the grounds that is the O M S football, practice football field. As long as they're doing what they can to be socially distanced out there, I don't think that any one of us are going to bother with trying to get people off of that space. So if they want to come and watch the game around the fence or set up out there, that's their prerogative, and until the county says, "No, they're not allowed to gather there," I think we would continue to allow it as long as they weren't doing things that they weren't supposed to be doing out there.
Any other questions?
Melidia Payne. So are you open to moving to option one at any point?
At this point, option one wasn't provided for by our county. So I don't think our county is going to approve option one. None of our schools in the county are looking at option one. I think the only way that occurs is if there is something that would indicate that we're seeing a reduction in positive cases or that the spread of the virus is not what they thought that it was. But at this point, I think our county has been pretty clear that they don't feel that large volumes of people in indoors or outdoor spaces is appropriate. And I think that when they intended for us to identify these as plans, that that's what they were going to hold us to until they gave us some sort of green light to say, "Okay, let's change this up." So I think we're all open to option one if option one can come, but we're not in control of who gets to determine when option one comes. That will be our health department telling us that, yeah, we're ready to go to a different option.
So that was my next question.
When you say "they," is that the health officer or the county commissioners?
I think in essence, the way that they work, they're one and the same. So the county health officer is going to make a recommendation to the county commission. At this point in time, I've not seen any indication that the county commission would not follow his recommendation. I don't go to every commission meeting, nor do I sit in the conversations behind the scenes. But to this point, the county administrator has seemed very complimentary of the work that Dr. Ransom and Nick Robbins have done, and it seems that the county commission have done the same. So I'm not sure that we would see them break away from the recommendations of them, but I'm not the five county commissioners and I don't get to make that decision. But in the end, I guess the county commission can override what they want to the same way that other entities can, so that would be their prerogative, I guess.
Okay. And are we going to be live streaming the sports events for people? Obviously in volleyball, you can't line up over on the...
Yeah, so we've had lots of conversations about live streaming and that's something that we can do and will do. It might actually be a great opportunity. I think if you look for silver linings in any of these things, one of the great things is that we've got more people tuning into board meetings than we've ever had before because of the way that we provide it. I think we'll have people who have never been able to attend in person before. We'll provide a form and a means to livestream and we'll continue to do so even beyond this. I know that we've had relatives in other states, California and Texas and some things that have contacted me and say they're super excited that they've heard that we're going to livestream events and they can actually watch their relatives play or do whatever it is that they do, whether it's band or cheer or whatever. So we will do that and we'll make sure that we get it out there and try to do the best that we can with it. None of that is going to be perfect and I'm sure that it will lend itself to some criticisms as we learn how to do it, but it will certainly be something that we're going to do.
And do a call for student volunteers.
Absolutely.
That's the other side of the line, if we can have kids do this.
Absolutely.
On the broadcast side of live streaming.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Dr. Cobb's?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham. So I was reading through option two from the Frontier League. I don't think it necessarily means the way I read it, but it says, "Coaches, both home and away, are asked to..." Okay, hold on. Teams will have the option to utilize outdoor space at halftime.
Yep.
Does that mean not using the locker room during halftime?
Yeah, we're going to try to keep people out of our locker rooms. So the locker rooms are one of the things that I think county health officers are most fearful of because of the way they work and they operate in close proximity. When you take 60 kids and you put them into a locker room space, nobody has a locker room big enough to really house all of them at the same time. It's not the way in which they were created for schools. So we're going to... One of the things that we identified was, one, there is a concern with anybody going into anybody else's locker room, I think, and we have this, that anybody else will be as diligent in the process as we are. So sending our kids into somebody else's school is not necessarily where we want to be, especially if we can keep them outside and keep them safe. Now, if it's raining, if it's cold, if it's any of those things, yes, we'll utilize the locker room spaces, but if we can keep our kids outside, I think we're going to. We're going to ask that they're dressed before they get on the bus so that we're not dressing in locker rooms, those types of things.
I wonder if we would not look at something like, this is just crazy, but a tent of some sort, especially for like the athletic, the outdoor athletic stuff. And, you know, we're going to have to figure out if people need to use the bathroom during halftime.
Yeah, so we address bathroom needs. All of our coaches will be given a key to the locker rooms. If somebody needs to get in there to use the restroom, then certainly they'll have access to do it. We have other spaces that we don't have access to locker rooms and we have people that stay outside. I think for a long time, Baker University wouldn't allow us to use their locker room, so anytime we were playing Baldwin High School, our kids were on the football field at halftime. So there are some different venues where this has just been normal. That may be different recently, but in the past, that's the way that it worked because Baker wouldn't let us in there. So it's just one of those things that we'll work through. I think it's another thing that the A Ds identified that football coaches were perfectly fine with and they'd keep them outside and be fine with it. And really, in the fall, it's really only football that would utilize the locker room spaces anyways.
Thank you.
Alright, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the spectator plan as presented.
Second.
It's moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Susan Moore that we approve the spectator plan as presented. We will do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0. We are down to MOUs with O E A.
Alright, so we made some changes to this tonight that were minor changes in the grand scheme of things. You can see that they're highlighted here. So you can see that the term "will" was added there at the top. We also added that they can gain access to technology support by using the help desk ticket, and then I think there was one more down the road that identified the name of the act that we'll actually be working through. So nothing crazy changed. The MOUs, and then of course, a number 16, once ratified considering that our negotiated agreement isn't quite done yet. So the biggest pieces of this were really the things that we knew were coming, which was the ability to add additional days of professional development at the beginning, that the first day was not a full day, or the first day was a full day, not a half day, and that we moved the flex day to a work day. The rest of it is really just about clarity in terms of expectation. What happens if somebody comes up with a positive test? How does the Family First Cares Act work? Those types of things. So I think there are 18 different agreements here. All of them are positive for us as well as our staff and I think creates some quality guidelines for us in a year which nothing is going on as expected. So I certainly think it creates a lessened anxiety among staff when they kind of know what they can expect in the coming years or in the coming months, as well as some guidelines for our administrators moving forward, how to address our staff in these times.
Any questions before we take action on the MOUs? Alright, would someone like to make a motion?
Madam President, I move we approve the MOU with O E A as presented.
Second.
Moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Chris Cunningham that we approve the MOU with O E A as presented. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead has left. Melidia Payne?
Yes.
And that passes 5-0. Alright, we are down to personnel. You've all been provided a personnel report. Would someone like to make an action to approve said report?
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion that we move the report as presented.
Second.
Moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Susan Moore that we approve the personnel report. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
And that passes 5-0. We are down to announcements.
Hey, I just want to say a couple of things. One, there's been a lot of work on negotiations done this year, and I think our negotiated agreement is getting very close to being done. But I want to recognize Linda and Melidia for all the work that they've done with our O E A team and trying to do something great, and I think that MOU is a piece of that, trying to do what's best for our staff in an environment that is different than any of us would have hoped for when we started down this journey. But there are some other things. I want to thank Dean who gave a great presentation on Big Blue Button today. And if you've ever worked with anybody in technology, it is amazing that it could be the most perfect presentation for one person and the most awful presentation for another because everybody is at a different level with their ability with technology. Dean did a great job today. He was very sound with his work with them, took a very slow and thoughtful process with them, trying to learn something new that is very different than what many of our staff have ever done before. So certainly, we appreciate Dean and his insight from a technological standpoint. Our administrators have been hard at work for a long time and having our teachers in the building for the past two days with Friday and Monday is a nice getaway from what we've done for the last two months. So it's been great having our teachers back. Our teachers have been very excited about the work that we have ahead of us and the task that we need to accomplish this year, and I appreciate them very much for taking this head-on and making sure that we can do the best that we can for our kids in a time that is very much unknown and how we're going to be able to accomplish all of the things in comparison to how we used to do it. So I appreciate them very much and I just wanted to make sure that any of our staff that is out there listening to this know how much we appreciate them and know how important they are to us and to our kids, and that we very much look forward to getting kids back into our buildings and getting back in the learning process. And that's all I have.
What a great way to end the meeting with that note of thanks to everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
It's all moved.
Second.
Everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. And that passes 5-0.
Thank you, everybody.